Take your zircon box in here.
Nope.
They have the EMG, right?
Well, you were saying you wanted to call.
Yeah.
It was punching. And this is hard. Wallace.
It looked like you put on a belt. Here he's sitting there. Can't tell you're a teacher.
When I was with old Paul, it was hard.
I'm not a teacher. I was young. I have to deal with it.
Clark went down in the ditch the other day.
What now?
Clark was in the ditch down by McGarry's.
But I know you. I know your grandma.
Do you know who it was?
This is the corner.
Yeah, I don't know any guy.
Was it, uh...
I'm talking to the paddling too.
Oh, Paul Rashner.
No?
No. How'd they get it out?
I'm not a teacher.
Pulled it out on the bike path. Girl walk. What was this?
Seriously?
Apparently things we did.
Sunday morning.
Yeah. Like if you were gonna turn to go at McGarry's.
You have a shortcut.
You went right down into the ditch.
Just doing the walk there.
They drove that way?
I don't know.
Wow.
Six or six. Should've stretched out.
There's some juice down here. No heat is on.
That was before the other side.
That's one. That's more than my house.
Too frivolous.
By block either, block either.
Nope. He didn't have it all.
At most she's had it.
The only heater's around the...
Did you see what's gone up by the porch though? It looks like someone dumped it.
Well, right now I turned the floor off, so.
Yeah, look up by my porch. It's that very first corner as you're walking up. Probably stick around there.
I was under one thing.
Well, it's not...
I don't know what was going on. The compressor in the shop next door kicked on and our lights...
Makes you wonder what happened all of a sudden.
Uh-oh.
It was me.
Yeah, it's because he's... Well, there's only one E there.
Probably going to the shop that has been fertilized seventeen times yet already.
One meter.
Yeah.
It's spring, summer, fall. He waters it all the time.
We're that rusty.
Since they won.
Those are the bolts.
That's what...
Yesterday I accidentally put tomato seeds in my water. My plant in there somehow wanted to...
Well, like up there, he just makes this nice... I'm about seventy-five and there's not...
Tomato seeds. Yeah, I put it on again after I... I put the rock plant or the food in the water.
Nice, and I love this same year.
Hanging plant up front.
You got my coffee bar?
At that home?
Those days. Yeah. I mean, today they're just like... I mean, it was pretty yesterday too.
There's more of my house. The only thing that's still good now is the air compressor. I want kids to get it. That's the cheapest one. Just get a marijuana power, just a hundred bucks, just to run the light bulb. Get the juice though.
Only has a worker.
What's happening? Head by next one.
Wendy should have to stand up there.
You don't really have a raise. Let's clarify, Wendy was alive.
Wendy was alive.
I love when people come to the post office. I was talking to Wendy. The other Wendy. Yeah, I get that too. I'm like, that's Wendy.
Lurches is business.
Do you know there's another Wendy in the post office? I've known her for a long time.
What's that one? What is that crap? It says from March of forty-four, thirty-three.
You're lying.
Senate service. Senate service states, what's that? I didn't buy anything. Oh, hassle you feel. What's two hundred and forty-four dollars in Napa? Shocks for the brush job. I'll borrow. No more of you.
So, farmer.
We're gonna help you. Maybe it's like roll and get pregnant sometimes.
Yeah, she puts so much communication. Well, the radio. Twenty-four hundred.
Yeah. I make a motion to accept the minutes from, uh, whatever month that was, uh, April thirteenth.
Okay.
So, sorry, I made a mistake on the agenda. It should be the April meeting, not the May meeting. Who said that?
Nick did.
I have a question. And see that anything will ask.
I'll make a motion to accept the bills for April.
All second.
Grab a motion in a second.
That would be Wiki. Have to rush him over to the senior.
I'd like to add some gravel or some, some, uh, dust retardant on, uh, railways. Yeah, I was, I say we put road retardant, uh, on it to settle the dust and do the same thing.
Lynn, Adams, Cross, and Meadow.
Well, maybe, well, maybe.
Or whatever you think.
Yeah.
Do we have a cost on it, whatever it is?
Well...
Because we talked about it before.
Well, it had a cost, but, uh, I don't know. Josh was looking it up the other day, but we had a phone number for that company, but I don't know how much it costs, but...
It, uh, it not, not too expensive and it's, uh, it keeps the gravel down, the dust down, and it also holds the, the gravel in place. Because...
Well, if we have that many places, I think that we should get an estimate on what it costs to do all of them rather than just one.
Well, I have a question. So, we received some money for, uh, road construction. Does that, is that able to come out of that or is that a different budget?
I'm not certain of that. Because it's for like chuck holes and, and, you know, uh...
That is, uh...
Chick seal and that kind of stuff, but I don't know about dust abatement. But, but we do...
Down the road.
Well, yeah, that won't be this year, but we do have a regular street budget.
We have regular strip levy.
So, what streets are you thinking to include in this estimate?
I'll let, do you want, do you, do you agree on Meadow?
I, I think, I think that these, these gravel streets, which we have, what, four?
Well, Adams is real short.
Yeah, Adams is short.
And Lynn is pretty short, around the backside of Lynn. Mike, what do you think about Lynn? Dust abatement.
It's steep.
But if it gets dust abated...
Yeah, cool with that.
What was the last one you said? Uh, Lynn, Road.
Adams, Lynn, Meadow, and Railroad.
And then Cross is over by Vicki, right behind, kind of by her house. It's short, pretty short. We just have to do a short.
Oh, right, right.
It's just short and we can get them, you know, maybe...
I think they're all pretty short except for Lynn and Meadow, right?
Yeah. If we, if we could just get some grain and where you could cut the, because we don't have the... I guess Jim has a big grader that he can grate the whole street with. I mean, we've been talking about, going this since last year, never wait because we do want to do it in the summer. It's not so wet spring. Yeah. So, we get to like, I mean, say, can we get the estimate? If it's reasonable, let's do it and...
To do all of it rather than just one?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Just do it all at one time. Sounds like it'll kind of buy an ad for keeping the road in better shape.
So, do you want to make a motion to table it for next month and get the estimate? Don't you want?
Well, I, because we need to get it.
Get it done.
Did you get done? You want to just get it done or you want to table it for next month?
Well, I have a question because it just says railroad street. Are we allowed to add Meadow, Road, or Meadow, Lynn, Adams, and Cross? Who needs those?
We can, I mean, we can table it until we get an estimate and then we can... Next month's meeting is on the eighth, so it's pretty early in the month.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to table it and get an estimate for, uh, Cross, Adams, Lynn, Meadow, and Railroad.
Second.
All right, Jim. Did you bring that new truck tonight or... What's that?
The information that I have about that is some phone calling. And so this is, okay, so, I should've just wrote all this down so I could just read it because that would be much easier. Okay, so I called the county asking about Old Main Street. I, because I was looking for information on what streets the city owns. If there's some sort of like a deed or, or something in writing that says this is Julietta's street, Julietta takes care of it, or so on and so forth. So, I called the county asking about the stretch where Jane Smith was talking about because she thought that, um, she owned part of that. And the county basically said that it, and I don't know if you've ever looked at the, the county parcel viewer, um, but it has, our city streets sort of glossed out on that map. So, you can click on them and it doesn't show any other information like it does if you click on my lot or Vicki's lot or whoever's Lynn. Um, it's just blocked out as a roadway. It's not necessarily, they said, owned by anybody. It's just as a roadway in the county's records. So, that's what that all looks like, um, next to Jane's property. And then, Justin, you said that you spoke to Ernie and he said that they rechecked...
They found a survey pin, the original survey pin. They walked over the hill. It was twenty feet off of the new survey and that Jane's property ends right under the pavement, like an inch under the pavement. So, they don't actually own the road.
It's on the lower side.
The lower side. So, they're not, they don't actually own any of the road. It's what I heard from Ernie, the son of the owner, so...
So, that basically goes along with the county's, what the county said. The county said that if somebody was, was claiming that, that they owned, owned part of the street, then they would have to have paperwork to show that ownership. Um, and then where it is blocked out as a roadway, it stops there at the edge of Jim's and Kathy's land where that starts. And then it's just sort of, Jim's and Kathy's land just sort of encompasses the rest of, I guess that would be River, River View Drive. So, I called the surveyor, Terry Golden, who's done a lot of surveying for Julietta, and asked him if, if he had anything, you know, that said in, in writing about any city roads or anything like that. And he told me about prescriptive easements, prescriptive rights, which I gave you all that paperwork and, uh, so that you could read about that. So, basically, if someone has been, say for instance, driving across this farmer's pasture for more than twenty years, it just sort of becomes a roadway and, and he is allowed to, to keep doing that. So, it's, it's kind of the same thing where everybody's been driving on that roadway for way more than twenty years. It's now kind of considered a roadway and you, you can't say, you know, Joe can't drive on that, but Jack was fine or, or whatever. It's, and it, and it says this better in this paperwork. Um, this twenty years, uh, timeframe is in the Idaho state law. That's what, that's where that number comes from. And, and Terry also said that a lot of the roads in this area in the state were sort of formed by this prescriptive easement. It was just so many years of people driving there and they decided to put a road there, so, um, it just became a road. So, I mean, what that says to me, and, and I, and I guess if, if you wanted to look into it further, you, you certainly could, but it says to me that everybody's been driving on it for a long time, so it's sort of everybody's road. So, I don't know if, if Jim would even still want to go through the, the, the trouble, the, the work of giving the roadway to the city or the city annexing or, or however you want to say that. Because it, it's, everybody can still drive on it just like they always have been.
Start a question. So, the section that goes up until Jim and Kathy's property is, is basically the city's?
Basically. I mean, like I said, we don't have any sort of deed or anything that shows, uh, written ownership of it. It's, it's in the city limits. We've been maintaining it right along, so I guess we just keep on keeping on. So, I think that's everything that I found out.
So, the question, the question I have is the road that continues on from Old Main to River, River View? River View? Where everybody else is driving on it, who's the one that maintains it?
The people that lives out that way.
Is that the way it is with Old Main?
Well, and that's, and, and I'm not certain about that because Old Main, like I said, is blocked out on, on the county's records as a roadway.
And that other, uh, River View's been...
But it's been used.
But it's been a roadway for more than twenty years as well.
Right. So, I guess, I guess you could argue that that might have to be decided.
In seventy-one, when Dad bought that from, Dad and Mom bought from Brown, and she didn't have the cattle down there that she had. She did have cows, but like was Kathy was saying, that there was a cattle guard there and there's no cattle or cattle guard there either, one now. And everybody comes and goes out there as a pleas and needs and it's an extension of Old Main. And you guys plowed the snow out there along with water lines out there and cities or electricity's out there for those folks as well. Do you expect the landowners to maintain that as a road? The same as Kathy with her corner, me, my corner, Matt doesn't, he goes across Kathy's.
He has easement, a written easement.
Right.
Don't you?
That's what I said, he goes across yours. But who's the one that takes care of those properties? I mean, everybody has an easement across my corner as well to get to Kathy's. Am I gonna say, no Kathy, you can't go, no? But no, and the reason is because the twenty, I wouldn't do that anyway, so that goes with the law states that after twenty years with the easement thing, so, or not easement, but...
Prescriptive.
Prescriptive easement.
So, who's the one that takes care of that road? Should there be a, a, uh...
Ordinance?
Pardon?
Are you thinking ordinance or something?
No, a, uh, use of some kind of a, whoever uses it have a shared cost in it? You know, whoever, however many houses are out there, they share the cost in it.
So, have a homeowners association or homeowners, that's the deed that they have a, a maintenance agreement to maintain the road.
There's something, I'm trying to think what the name of it is and I've thought of it for...
Did you have a question, Kathy?
No, I have a statement. Um, the...
We're only looking for questions.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The description that was given for a prescriptive easement is not entirely accurate.
Well, it's right there from the state of Idaho, so you can take it up with them if it's not accurate. What, what is your interpretation of the...
Well, I got my interpretation from a real estate lawyer.
So, are they part of the state of Idaho?
Yes.
Are they like government though?
Excuse me?
Are they, well, I'm just wondering what the, why it's different with the real estate agent than it is the actual government.
What she said about going across and all that for twenty years, that's all accurate. That's all fine and definite, accurate, but it's very, very limited to only the activities that have been previous. In other words, you can't drive heavy equipment over a road if you've never been allowed to before. That is my road. There is a survey that proves that it's my road. As far as maintaining it, the road that goes out River View, if I'm not mistaken, is Jim's road. What maintaining has he done? Likewise, past me going towards town.
Well, what maintenance, what, have you done any maintenance on your section of the road?
What maintenance needed to be done?
Well, what maintenance needed to be done on his?
He just said. Why should we, do we need to put in...
Well, well, that's why I'm asking is you're saying that he didn't do any maintenance, but I'm wondering if what maintenance you did?
He brought up the maintenance. I'm just making a comment about it. But prescriptive is very, very narrow. It's not just because you've always been able to drive over there and everybody's been able to go out there, that's what it is. All those people out that road have a prescriptive easement, including Jim. I have a prescriptive easement on his property as well because it has been allowed for me to be out there for fifty years. So, that's a moot point. Telling me that I have to do something with it from this point beyond is not a moot point. I don't have to. It's very narrow and it's only what has been allowed. I have certain cases or whatever you want to call it. I don't have them with me now because I didn't print it out. But there are cases concerning extremely similar where a subdivision was going to be made out of road. That's new people going over that road, not people that have existed there for twenty years. That's new.
Okay, so, if the road to Kathy's is technically the city's, okay? Well, Jane doesn't own it. She's said that she doesn't own it and his property, he owns, he, he comes, lays across part of it. But I'm saying if the pavement...
The road to the edge.
If the road to the edge...
Would kind of...
Is, is, is kind of the city's or whatever, and then he widens his portion of the road that he owns and then doesn't drive on yours. I'm not sure, I mean, I don't understand, like if he widened his part where he's not driving on yours, then he should be able to drive heavy equipment on his road and up his driveway, correct? If he's not touching yours?
That wasn't what he just said, though.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm asking a question as well.
Is that what he intends to do?
Well, I don't know what he intends to do. I'm just asking, you know...
I don't either.
What the, what the...
What is the issue with him driving heavy equipment across a piece of the road?
It's my property. I do not give permission to access my property for this project in any way. Without a specific easement involved.
Move it over.
That's fine. As long as he does not involve my property.
Because you, you're a heavy equipment operator, you know how to do it, you can do it very simple. I would suggest you just kick that little zig in there and just cut it off.
If you decide to move forward with, yeah, whatever.
Move forward if you're down on the three lots, right?
And then I don't know how we would do the, like the gravel section past that is actually River View, they call it, right? I don't know if that's, I mean, we plow it. Do we do anything else like this?
I just plow because that's courtesy.
But that's heavy equipment. I mean, is that considered heavy equipment to take a plow out there or dump trucks or anything like that for maintenance?
Well, according to the state of Idaho, uh, anything over twenty-six thousand pounds is considered, you have to have a CDL special license, well, thirteen thousand, you have to have certain licenses. And dump trucks, especially that one being a single axle, is gonna put more weight on the ground than say Jim's with the tandem axle and a tag. So, I would say that the plow is probably putting just as much or more pressure on the road as the tandem axle with tag per square inch of the tire with the loaded rock and the heavy plow in the front. Because that plow in the front is not light, it's ancient. So, if you're going pounds per square inch, I would say the dump truck has more pounds per square inch than say a dump truck with a tandem axle and a tag, especially the super singles on the front.
And I'm just running this out there, so Kathy, but you, you're basically giving the city permission to run their heavy equipment across the plot, correct?
Yes.
Do I answer or does he answer?
Go ahead and answer.
Excuse me?
Go ahead. I'm asking you a question.
Nobody's ever asked me. They've just done it.
Okay, so are you okay with that or not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to keep the people...
So, you're okay with the city running their heavy equipment?
They don't have to. They don't have to at all.
I'm not, I just asked, so you're okay with that because they're plowing and going to the end?
For my neighbors, it doesn't have any bearing on me.
I'm sorry.
For my neighbors, I'm not gonna stop them from getting in and out of their driveways.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, so you're okay with the city doing that because it, for, for your goal to your property with heavy equipment, because it plows and it fits for your neighbors? You just don't want Jim to use his heavy equipment on it, correct?
I've never been asked. They've just done it and I've never stopped them.
But you didn't answer my question, so I'm just asking. It's fine if you don't want it, it's your property. I'm just asking, I'm just trying to solve this...
I'm just answering too. I've never been asked.
Enigma, it seems to be. So, if you're okay with the city running their plow through and I would understand that it works for the neighbors and they can get in and out and stuff? You just don't want Jim to run his because you're, it sounds like you're against him dividing that property if I'm not speaking Ukrainian.
I'm protecting my property. End of conversation. That's all I'm doing is protecting my property. I'm not for or against what's going on out there, no.
Well, once she has just moved the road over on that little section through there, just move it over and you won't be on her property and nobody will be driving on it and you just take that.
So, part of the... Kathy, can I put any of that heavy equipment on your property?
Not at all. Not without an easement agreement.
Can I finish my statement?
Go ahead.
Can I put that heavy equipment on part of your property to improve the road?
No. Not my property with the heavy equipment.
So, widening the corner, if I go on your...
As long as you don't touch my property.
Okay. So, proving the road with my equipment, that being not being able to touch your property? What it says in the state of Idaho, when you do go on somebody else's property, when you have an easement, as long as you're always improving the easement, you can do it. You just cannot make it worse. That is what the law says.
Not with a prescriptive, not with a prescriptive.
That is what it says.
Maybe the lawyers need to decide that. Because my lawyer's told me contrary.
Well, I have a question. I'm just curious as to why you don't want to make the road safer. I mean, I've, I've heard you talk about it's a bad corner, but I'm just curious as to why when we're trying to make it, Jim's offering to make it safer for everybody, why do you not want to make it safer? That's, well, I'm just curious.
I don't know if I have to answer that question. I'm just protecting my property is all I'm doing. What's that?
Don't answer that question.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Just stop it.
Okay.
I'm just...
Let's move on.
Let's move on. Let's move on.
I think you're just gonna have to get a truce.
Can we add a open bids here for, uh, for the sale or pickup?
Pardon me? Are we done with that part of the... Thank you.
We have a bid here for five hundred and six dollars.
Five hundred and six?
Excuse me? We're trying to, if you could, I mean...
Who is that one from?
We're trying to go over the bids. And there's kind of a quiet talker, so if you just keep it down a little bit.
Five hundred and six dollars?
Four.
And here we have one for eighteen hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Wow.
And who's that one from? Dell Province. Can you spell the last name? P R O V I N C E.
Do we have a motion for, uh, to get rid of that instead of letting it sit down later?
Sorry, I'm making a motion to accept, uh, what was his name?
Dell Province.
Dell Province for eighteen...
Fifty.
Fifty-one. I'll send it.
Do we have a second?
Fifty seconds. Fifty seconds.
Fifty seconds, all right, all in favor? Passes, she's gone, down the road.
Well, close to it.
Okay, now we've got to consider the, uh, for the maintenance people and here at the office, a smartphone, or the three, two, two, have the, have the, a phone that they're going to have to use their own or-
What are we using them for?
Well, if we're, because they, they get calls constantly and they're using their own phones and, uh, and so if we had the, if they had the city phones, am I right?
No, we have, they have city phones, don't they?
Okay, so they have, technically they have city phones, they are not smartphones.
They're the old phones, they're ancient, right.
So both, you both carry your own personal smartphone because they do a lot of looking up of various things, taking pictures, texting, I mean, all kinds of stuff. I also use my own phone at work to receive and send texts to them because it's just much easier than calling. I snap pictures of burn permits and I send them to Mike, so on and so forth. I know the guys don't like carrying the city cellphone because then they've got two cellphones because they need their smartphone capabilities. So mine was thinking that maybe we kind of, um, upgrade to the smartphones for the guys, so that way they can just carry the one that has everything that they need. And then maybe we also have one in the office, um, for, for both of us to use.
To really bike and forth to everybody.
Right, for, for this, for the same reason. This falls under in our personnel policy, we put in there that we don't want people to give out personal cellphones. I know the guys currently do, but you know, maybe they would prefer not. I know I don't like to give out my personal cellphone to anybody but, you know, people that I know. And also if, if there was a records request for, for any, anything that could be on that cellphone as far as city business, we have to surrender the whole entire cellphone to the attorney to go through and decide what's, you know, what's city and what's personal. And so that way we're not giving up our, our personal cellphones, we can just move and be completely on, on city equipment.
So what's the cost to change that, it's like you might have an idea?
I did, with, include cellular, the one we have, um, so I did, um, I chose that package, the twenty dollars a month, one gigabyte. Um, and so it would be about two hundred for three phones.
Total?
Yeah, I think so. Uh, why did print this out?
What do we pay right now?
We pay eighty dollars and forty cents. But we've been paying, yeah, I mean, it hasn't gone up or down or anything, I mean-
Do we have to pay for the phones?
We would have to pay for them initially, yeah.
So what? What kind of smartphone are we thinking, because I know they get kind of pricey.
I would say just, you know, as long as it does what they need it to do, you know, get online-
When you can get the rights for the contract, I get the contract.
That's what I'm wondering, if they offered one or what, is-
I don't think we need the latest and greatest iPhone or anything like that, if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm just wondering.
And you can table it and I can get some more estimates.
I, I'm okay not tabling it, I think that there's a lot that they do with it.
Because there are Androids and smartphones.
Yeah, right.
Because I have an Android and mine does everything.
Yeah, mine, I, I have an Android also, I prefer it better than a smartphone, but that's because I've never had a smartphone.
They're all smartphones, you're not like Android or iPhone.
Android or iPhone.
Yeah, what's the difference?
Apple or Android, I saw an iPhone, it's an operating system, it's all different.
It makes me feel like I'm less than that when I just have an Android.
Make you feel like you're less than?
Yeah, less than a smartphone, not up to the smartphone.
It is a smartphone.
It is a smartphone.
It is a smartphone, I'll put that on tape. I just worry about that, you know, because if, if we have to turn it over to the lawyer, then you lose your personal phone for anywhere up to two weeks. And you have no say about it.
The interesting thing is if you do go in cellular, then my work phone will have internet. This is my personal phone, I do not have internet in Juilliata on my phone.
Oh, well, that would be super handy for you.
So I either have to be here at the office or at the library or at my home to get internet on my phone.
So then it would be more helpful for you to Google or-
More helpful to look at phone numbers and that kind of thing, so, because I always ask Josh. I call or ask him to look up something for me.
I think you and I need a smartphone. Well, I go, well, I do too.
Can I make a motion to upgrade the phone, just the three smartphones? I'll send it.
She's ahead of you.
And also if the time comes, we can integrate with the water system and the new wastewater system at some level at some point with smartphones.
That would be nice, L Y I, so. So it would be really helpful. You're not flushing.
Actually, well, I flush it comes this way. I flush twice when the water is low, see if I can-
Okay, Wendy, would you explain about the-
Um, we, we got some CARES Act money, I think you're all aware of that, and part of that money we spent on iPads, which were suggested by our computer guy, BNI Computer, to get iPads for, we ordered one for each council member and mayor and one for Justin and one for Josh. And, um, that will help, like if we ever have to zoom in meetings, you will have your own device to zoom in on. And also we thought it would just be really handy so that, you know, the stacks of paperwork, I could email them to you and you can have them on your tablet and not have stacks and stacks of paperwork. So at any rate, we've, we've ordered the iPads, we have them. Jay still has to go through and set them all up, but in the meantime, we created a draft user agreement for the iPads. Just wanted you guys to look at it, see if there's anything that you think needs to be added, deleted, changed. And then that will be initial and filed away by everybody when they receive their iPad.
Overachiever.
Someone was reading it. It does say copy or impactful.
Only question or concern I have is, the signal last one, it says, I understand the iPad issued to me must be kept with a passcode. And the passcode will be given to me and won't be changed. I know the city of Lewiston, it's like huge, like even our IT people don't know our passcodes, that way you, you know, somebody can't go in there and-
And see the post office, we have, we put them in an envelope, eight stamp, two people sign it, that way something happens to me, then you can get into it and open it. So that might be an option.
I don't foresee there being any real sensitive information on, on these iPads. Um, I mean, I, I could be mistaken, I don't know, you know, how, how yours are used, I mean, this could certainly be changed.
Because will these have, like, will they be set up so they can access the internet and things like that?
Yes, that was the idea.
I just can tell you from the people who can look at things that they shouldn't on-
Well, Jay tells us that he's going to set it up in such a way that you can't be on things that you shouldn't be able to be on. It's, it's meant to be for your, your city and parish.
I guess I have an issue with somebody having my passcode, if I left it here accidentally or something, and I'd say anybody would ever do this, because if they have a passcode, they could go in and look up something that I'm supposed to or put something on there that I don't know about and I'm going to get blamed for something. And that's, that's my, and I don't think anybody would do that between four, but I do think that is a concern. So I think you create your own thing and then maybe like you save it. You know, put it in there, we seal it, it's all sealed up, and then if somebody needs it, they can open it up and get it.
Well, and that's why, but like with Jake, if something does happen, then we have to get it to Jay at least, you know.
That's where you get the envelope out of the safe that says, I have to maintenance, and that's where it is.
Yeah, but he's gonna have to set up, he's gonna have to set up a passcode first.
Right, and then we go in and change it, I do mine every ninety days with the post office. Locked in the safe with my boss, you know, case on.
Well, that's why you're looking at it now.
Well, the only, one I would, I don't care, I think we ought to do what Wendy suggested, have them seal one and people would know, but that way there's just never a question that your homeowner has it, you know, share it, if you do, that's fine. That's my, that's the only one I, I'm careful.
Well, that's a good suggestion, I like it.
We're all honest.
I know, but, but somebody might walk through that isn't.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
You know, because like even below it talks about, I understand employee information retained, I think that is guarded confidential. And then I leave it here to some person or I forget it or somebody steals it out of the car and then they get that passcode, now they have access to all that, so. I'm letting them do the rest.
Let's move on then.
Do you want to accept that policy as, as Jeff wanted to change it?
I believe it would.
Do you make a motion?
I do, you can.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept it once it is changed with Jeff's rotations.
Give it a second?
I'll second my idea.
Follow the data, passes. All right, Justin.
I talked to Mike a little bit earlier about Joe Server and Paul Hutchison asked me about the ditch behind their house. And they said that Frank had come with equipment and cleared it out one time and someone else burned it out one time and I don't know what all, but-
The draw?
It's a devil's triangle down in there, I wouldn't even step a toe in there, so I don't, and Mike thinks that it is not good to burn and he refuses for the firearm to burn it, so.
Not now.
Yeah, they don't know what the answer is.
Every time I've been approached, I've told them, cut the crap down, then we can discuss burning it. But they, nobody's gone in there and cleaned it out and we're not going to burn it.
Where's this at?
Just a draw, hold that second, hold that.
Yeah, just right there.
Right up there, second on the left there, that draw.
I can, I can assure you, I have a big blackberry patch on the farm and you torch that thing.
Oh, baby.
And there is-
It's like sugarcane, it just goes crazy sometimes, I don't know what to do, if I spray it and kill it, then it's all dead and kind of ready to burn.
Isn't that private property?
Yeah, well-
So why would, why would the city be responsible for that?
I don't know, they're, I don't know what they're trying to do.
That's my thought too, the landowners should be taking care of their own property.
Okay, I'll pass that on. The other thing is, um-
I'll touch it off, I'll second that.
The cemetery district got a new mower this year and we went with a gravely, the same as the city of Juilliata. And I had a lot of heartburn and a lot of stress that Mike Teft was going to be upset with it and not like it. However, he really likes it, it works ten times better than the John Deere, it has a mulch kit, there's no grass blowing around on some stones. And anyway, so the cemetery looks great and he mowed it this weekend, so that's good news.
The only thing I have is that someone was wondering whether or not we were ever going to change the, or paint the fly pole. They can, they can't paint it.
No, I'm not supposed to, I'm not supposed to get too high on that.
Well, I think the last time. How long ago was that, that we did that, that you did that?
That's probably been ten, ten years, twelve years.
I took pictures, I tried to find the pictures I took of you and, I think you and Joe.
It was.
Somebody was saying it may not, it needed to be, needed to be-
Yeah, probably because they painted it.
Painted or a new one or something, yes. Not a new one, that's the only thing I have.
Matt Teft, speaking of Matt Teft, would like to know if we can put the memorial bench out here in front in Becca Becky. He said he would pay for all of it, want to know if we could do something, if not, there may be the- Where at? Out here in front for people to sit down, like tap and do some city stuff or whatever. Oh, on the sidewalk? On the sidewalk.
Becca Becky's put in about twenty years here or maybe a little more. It's, um, I think it's a good idea to remember her. She was-
And he said he'd pay for everything if, if you guys are open.
Yeah, because it, uh, do I have to move that on our pot?
Maybe we can build around it.
Do we want to see what he's got in mind before he goes?
He's thinking just a regular bench, something that you just have two or three people sit on.
Permanently installed or just sat there?
Yeah.
That way it doesn't air, that way it doesn't walk off.
It'll get everywhere.
Yeah, it's got to be bolted down and it's got to be, you know, if it's, um, trex or something, that got, that will never rot away and it's going to last for years. I know herbs, if you have wood, I know the ones on the trail. Gabe and I took and, and, uh, took them apart and then we slipped the two vines inside of the plastic or the vinyl fence and then we bolted them back down and then that way they last and, you know. Be, so something like, like that would last, if you just take a-
I don't think you'd have a problem with that.
A Dubai, you put on there, the first thing, they don't last very long, it's, I mean, you gotta use-
Does it need to be an official council decision, like on a minutes of a meeting?
I don't know.
I mean, I think we're all for it, I just don't know if he needs to come and show us what he's thinking or-
Yeah, I can tell him.
I think that's a better idea, he knows the expectation, that it's not something that's going to rot or have to be removed after it would be permanent.
Because, because they'll get to take them ones that are on the trail, the ones that are made out of wood even, treated. Treated wood is nothing but, you're going to buy them, nothing but a white fir or pine and there's no, there's not much life in them. There's not, the, doesn't take long and they're rotted out. And so you have to have something that won't rot. And it's, it's easy to, you can just use two vines, but you need to seal it, put something over it, vinylware or something, you know, like fencing or something, but I guess anybody wants to, they can look at them on the trail, they can see what Gabe and I did for them.
I think he would just bring his ideas.
Yes. Okay, that's all I have.
Uh, somebody asked about maybe putting on the water bill, you know, authorized motor vehicles on the trail, only because I guess somebody's been riding their four wheeler up and down the trail and almost hit one of the guys running. And he was down there with his two little kids, so.
I can put something on the down, I can put it on Facebook too.
That's all I got.
How about you, Miss Wendy?
I don't have anything today.
Um, just that, um, if you look at, um, the other deposit, um, sheet that you got. Down below where it has, um, the pop latch, um, accounts, they're coming due in June, so on June eighth, we will have to make it an action item and by then I'll know what the rate will be and we'll, we can decide if we're going to do another six months or a year or whatever, because I think the rate goes up a little bit if the longer you're going to do a certificate. So I'll give you up to two years, um, and find out the rates. But I just want you to be aware and look at it this next month and you guys can kind of make a decision. But if you note, um, I looked back and before it rolled over this one time to the point seven five, we were getting like five hun- before it rolled over this one time to the point seven-five, we were getting like five hun, or three hundred and forty-eight dollars every three months, and now we're only getting fifty. That's how bad the percent rate is for the certificate. So we don't really want to keep it for a two-year lock-in at that, because the object is to build it. So that especially with the wastewater plant, that we have all that, those funds that we can borrow against, if we don't get all the grants that we need. So, I mean, it's just a heads up, so... And that's all I got.
I don't have anything.
Hey, when you guys are looking at dust abatement, can you look at Riverview Drive, put some dust abatement on that?
It's a private drive.
Well, we can, we can sure look at her.
Yeah, that's... I guess one thing that, not trying to stir up a can of worms, but I mean... That does, above our house right there, I mean, most of the neighbors are...
They put a speed sign there, two miles down.
Yeah, I see what you mean. I only plow as a courtesy for the homeowners, I don't plow as courtesy. So, it's up to you guys, so it's totally fine if you wanna add it on, but it, I'm just saying.
Get the estimate with and without, and then when we decide what we're doing as far as that road, we can discuss it.
It's kind of like railroad streak.
It's so much of fud, or so much of yard, whatever.
So do we have to measure? Do we measure the roads, or do they measure them?
They do.